Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue on with the committee of the whole. We have two items for this afternoon. Our first item is a discussion of financial guidelines. The administration will provide a briefing on the city's adopted financial guidelines with an emphasis on public safety. The discussion will include information related to the 50-50 reactive proactive approach favored by Bellingham Police Department, an overview of the strategic planning process undertaken by Bellingham Fire Department, and an update on the recently created jail alternatives position and activities in municipal court. The presentation is in response to numerous prior discussions during the 2019-2020 budget adoption process. You can take us through our Brian Heinrich and Forrest Longman.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. So hopefully you had a chance to read in your packet, we included a staff memo as well as a number of attachments that walked through the things that Dan just mentioned, the general financial management guidelines, the strategic plans from both PD and FIRE with an emphasis on staffing, the job position, municipal court, jail alternatives program, which I believe we've made an offer and will be filling that position here pretty soon. And then a little bit of a pivot there at the end with trying to discuss the condition assessment of our facilities. And I think maybe it's just an acknowledgement that I think we're here today covering this information in anticipation of the council retreat, which I believe will be later in April. And so this is just background information, so I'll actually, Forrest and I'll go through some of these items, but I'll turn it over to Forrest to discuss the financial management guidelines.
Yeah, so the financial management guidelines are in this packet here, and the management, financial management priorities are what the city uses to guide how we make our investments. And we thought it was good to just go over those as we're talking about how we're going to address programmatic and capital needs. And so these management priorities are broken into three tiers, and these are really just basic, basic best practices for general government and financial spending. Also, on the top tier, the first priorities are all public safety-related expenses and meeting our legal and mandated obligations. And then the second tier, we go down to, you know, covering the cost of general city government and maintaining the infrastructure that we have, operating city-owned assets and amenities, and running programs that exist, and replacing the assets and equipment as needed. And then on the third tier, the lowest priority is providing investments in assets or new assets in amenities and programming. So that's just really the basics there, and this, these two pages in the packet go through just, those are our adopted financial policies. And on the second page, there's just how we react to different revenue conditions and economic conditions, which are also very basic and just general best practices of scaling back when there's less money and ramping up responsibly when there's increased resources.
Any questions so far about maybe, Michael?
So I was a chair of the Finance Committee when these were adopted with Finance Director John Carter, and it was kind of interesting because that tier three there, the last words and programs to advance policy goals, that was added at council's request. It was kind of interesting that the thing that we focus on most, which is addressing policy goals in the financial guidelines, is third tier. I mean, it has to be there. You have to take care of the needs before the wants, but it's interesting, a lot of our work has to do with managing the top two tiers so there's room for the policy goals at the bottom, so we can get to tier three. If we don't get to tier three, that's a different kind of failure, right? So I think sound financial management through one and two is so that we can get to three.
So moving on, you'll see the strategic plan for Bellingham Police Department on their staffing model, and I think most of you probably recall when this came forward, I think it's been brought to council a handful of times in terms of what the goals are within BPD. Chief Dahl is here if you have any specific questions, but I think this outlines their approach pretty well. And as you recall, we've been adding positions in police department pretty faithfully for, I want to say going on maybe five years now, maybe six years. And then moving on forward, the fire department strategic plan, this RFP recently went out, and we have selected a vendor as well. There's lots of information in here with respect to the strategic planning process for FIRE. There certainly will be an emphasis on staffing. I will take into consideration things like annexations, how we grow, things of that nature. And Chief Newbold and Chief Hutter are here as well if there's any questions you might have about that. And I believe we'll have that recommendations on the strategic plan, maybe is it in July? July, July, August maybe of this year? And we'll certainly be bringing that back to council. So that was a pretty lengthy RFP. I don't know if you have any questions about that that you'd like.
Committee?
Any questions?
Councilmember Lillicust, Councilmember Knutson.
Not so much on the RFP for the fire strategic plan, but going back to the police and also the FIRE, for the fire department with creating some anxiety, obviously, in the administration, how we pay for it, we moved to start moving into increasing staffing levels already without the financial answers completed. Going to the police, though, says additional eight FTEs will still be required. As you say, we've been adding police officers to try to get up to that community policing goal. Are those new police positions staffed, or are they more like the fire department ones? We're not sure how we can afford all eight FTEs to get to that community policing goal.
Good afternoon, I'm David Dahl, I'm your police chief. So we appreciate the council's continued support on giving us those two FTEs a year. Several years ago, we did a workload study for staffing. When you received a explanation of that patrol allocation model staffing study, you recall that at past times, police departments would look at, like police departments, to determine their staffing levels, or look at how many officers per X number of community members. That really doesn't tell us much, because I don't know of any police department that is really adequately staffed. So we looked at what I think is important to us, and that is the actual workload, the 911 calls for service that our officers are experiencing 24 hours a day. And through that, we made a policy statement that of what kind of police department we want to be. Do we want to be a department that simply has our officers going from call to call to call without any unobligated time to engage in this philosophy of community policing, which means spending time with community members, identifying what problems are, and finding creative solutions on the underlying conditions of those problems. And through that, we get a number as to how many police officers we need to have that, what we call that 50-50 split, half of their time being unobligated and half of it being obligated. The good news is, is that through your support, by the end of this year, when we're up to full staffing, we'll hit that 50-50 split for our current call loads. We are also having the folks who taught us this workload study to come back to Bellingham this April and beginning in May, look at our new CAD system, look how we are recording our numbers to make sure that we are on task. The eight extra new positions that you speak of were positions that we would need if we wanted to staff all of our six police beats 24/7, every, every, every day. Right now, we don't have a police officer in every beat. Right now, we staff based on the incoming call load, so there are times in the day that we have fewer officers working than other times of the day. We increase our staffing as call loads increase. Mayor Kelly had an interest of having a police officer in every beat 24/7, and so the question was, what would it take to do that? And that's the answer, additional eight positions.
Councilmember Knutson.
Brian, this is the strategic plan we talked about during last year's budget talks, correct?
Correct.
And how long will this process take once you get some, once we get this company on board?
We expect to have the results of their, their planning July or August of this year.
So when we do budget adjustments, we might have some?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Councilmember Barker.
Hi, Chief. When you have that group come back to take a look at your plan, are you going to be addressing the increased calls with mental health and maybe what might change inside your plan?
Thank you for recognizing that, and yes, we will. You'll also note that we're asking for additional positions to move into a behavioral health component, so that we have officers that are focused on identifying our high utilizers and hooking them up with services in coordination with the GRACE program and other programs that exist.
Committee? Anything further?
Just a couple of things. I did include, I mentioned earlier, I included the jail alternatives and diversion manager job description, and that was just a nod to action that council took last budget cycle. This was a position that was identified by the municipal court and certainly supported by the mayor and council in creating and implementing, and I just wanted you to see that job description. It does have an impact on our overall public safety. Darlene Peterson, the court administrator is here if you have any, any questions about that.
Councilmember Barker.
I want to know if this is going to help Darlene, and it's actually, this position's actually going to cover the needs that you indicated for us, so I'm curious if this is, if this does cover what your needs were.
We're sure hoping so. We had some great applicants, and the person that we hired just rose to the top. She's a former chief deputy for the University of Houston, and she has worked with the FDS program, and so we're really excited about that. She also has lots of good ideas for how we can move forward. My hope is that when I bring a report to you sometime, maybe late April, that I'll be able to bring her here for you to meet her.
Committee, Councilmember Barker.
There was talk originally about having somebody that might be able to do this job, but then there were times, if I recall, when we were having to transport folks. Did we decide not to have it kind of do two roles, and maybe we might need to look at a midterm, a mid-biennium budget request for that transportation component?
At this point, we have really not seen an uptick in the times that we've needed to transport. Currently, the warrant officers are doing so. For this person to be able to handle all the information and the programs and so forth, going across to Yakima would not, would not work. But as, as far as what we've seen, transports are going, are going pretty well, and it's been under 10 transports a year that we've needed to Yakima.
Go ahead.
So we're kind of getting a lot of this information for our retreat in April, so as, I know your capital facilities, there's certainly some concerns there with Muni Court, but with this position and moving forward, other than specialty courts and some other things, no major budget concerns?
You know, I really do need at some point to look at hiring another court clerk. We had that five years ago in our budget, and due to restrictions, we took that off the table because the budget was tight. Also, in the future, we would like to look at some kind of social worker that could help with the mental, mental health court, and I don't know if that would be a position in police, or if it would be with the court, or where it would be, but I think that would be something that would be really helpful in addressing some of our concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Committee? Mr. Longman.
I just wanted to highlight the capital component of these public safety needs, that our two most glaring capital issues from a facility standpoint in the city are WACOM and the municipal court, which has been in an interim facility for nearly 20 years now. So just wanted to highlight those and make sure that those are on the radar as we begin discussing all these pieces.
And maybe to that point, page 99 of your packet has, and I'm sorry, the header on that page did not, that was my fault, I'm not sure why that, that wasn't included, but that was, this is a rating, we did an assessment of many, if not all, of the facilities in the city in 2013, and maybe the takeaway here is that the, the lower the number, the better the condition that the facility is in. So you can see, a number of these facilities have gotten worse over time, and as Forrest referenced, there's a handful here, the fire station, WACOM 911, municipal court have that public safety element. Again, going back to those guidelines, that's tier one, so we did want to draw attention to, public safety is not just staffing or fleet, there is absolutely that, that facilities component, so we did want you to be aware of that.
Okay. Committee, Councilmember Barker, then Barker.
I just had a question about the fire department strategic plan. What I was mostly interested was the scope of work, which I actually think is really good. But, and I did not, a couple of things I didn't notice is, and it's probably in here, but when is this project, the strategic plan, due?
We expect to get the results of the plan in July or August of this year.
July or August? And what are we paying for this RFP?
Oh, do you remember offhand? Sixty?
It's about $60,000.
About $60,000, and we should know by midsummer?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we can include it if we have to do any revisions in our updates to our budgets?
That's the goal, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Committee, Councilmember Barker, please.
It's just, so in the meantime, before, before our retreat, is Public Works going to be able to come? We haven't done a full capital facility overview as we make some determinations on how to move forward.
I believe we're looking at the 25th to have some of that, that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking to Ted, but yeah, I believe we'll be back in a couple of weeks to talk a little bit further about capital.
Councilmember Lillicust.
So kind of an anticipation of that, the table on page 99, as you said, lower numbers are better, bigger numbers are not, some of these numbers are up at 63%, 64%. What percent what? What does, what does that mean? Is that like building falling down, or is that like just needs, I don't know what 66% means. Can you give me just a rough estimate?
Well.
When the light turns green, and when it turns yellow, and when it turns red?
So all of these, except for the light catcher, are in the red, would be a way to think about it. I'd have to go back, and I'd be happy to share the original presentation and assessment that we did with FCI. And I don't know the details of how they, what goes into their formula for creating that number. If memory serves, anything above a .1 is considered a poor condition, right? So that would be, all of these except for the light catcher, which is relatively new compared to these other facilities. So we can dive into that in greater detail and be happy to provide.
They're all in the red, though.
It, yes.
Okay, committee, anything else? Anything else pursuant to this item? Okay, this is for information only, our second item is shelter update and city response. The city council will engage in a high-level discussion of homeless shelter capacity and response plans. The primary purpose of the discussion will be to identify further information needed regarding programs and plans managed by WACOM County with the ultimate goal of addressing gaps through joint cooperation with the county. It is anticipated that one or more county council members are here, and that's correct, are present for this conversation. So Councilmember Brown from county council reached out to me probably a week and a half ago and asked for this discussion, so I've invited them, county council members to come. I've also invited Mike Parker from the Opportunity Council to provide some numbers if needed, if council would seek that. I'm also asking that the administration provide information regarding shelter response plan as well as other types of programs. I count $6.6 million of programs that are pursuant to housing, whether it be operational, tenant-based rental assistance, there's quite, quite a bit that's going into this, and I wanted to see where, where we were, where the city was, and where the county is, and where the gaps are, and where the overlays are. So that's the purpose of today's discussion. So I'd like to invite Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Buchanan or Donovan to come down. Okay. Is the administration prepared to provide some information?
We are.
Okay, maybe we can begin there.
I apologize, apparently Councilmember Donovan doesn't want to sit with us, so.
Tara Sundin, Community and Economic Development Manager for the city. I am passing out a handout for you. It's been prepared by WACOM County Health. I believe Ann Deacon has shared it with Barry. I did get permission from her and from Tyler to share it with you today, so this is a draft proposal coming from the Health Department. So we have an interlocal agreement.
Can we put that up on the screen real quick?
Sure.
Sorry about that demeanor coming up.
So we have an interlocal agreement with WACOM County, and it has established the WACOM County Housing Advisory Committee. So this interlocal agreement and this committee, their charge is to make recommendation on some of the funding that the county receives. Let's see, I can. So again, this is the document that was prepared by Ann Deacon, WACOM County Health. It's a draft, I don't believe it's gone to the county council yet, so just keep that in mind, but they did say that I could share that with you, this, with you today. So the interlocal agreement with WACOM County, we're a party to this agreement, it establishes the WACOM County Advisory Committee, and their charge is to provide oversight of their, the county's five-year strategic plan to address homelessness. So the county takes the lead on that planning effort. The city has a seat, Samuel Lutz in our, in my division serves as the liaison on the committee. They're appointed by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. What the Health Department's proposing is that a subcommittee be established to coordinate the plan for severe weather shelters. So I think it was your last meeting, I talked to you about the city's plan this last season. We, we look at kind of the whole winter and had some backup plans for, in the event a severe weather hit, but this would be a more formal process, that the county would lead, the city would have a seat at the table, the county council person, as well as the administration and the Office of Emergency Management, small cities, and then some of our partners, such as the Lighthouse Mission, Fountain Community Church, Interfaith Coalition, I think I had, Interfaith Coalition today is running Family Promise a year round, but before, they were the ones that coordinated severe winter shelters, so we thought we'd pull them in as well, the Opportunity Council, and then a seat for a homeless advocate as well. And the purpose of the committee would be to develop a comprehensive policy for addressing severe weather conditions, and they would bring their policy recommendations to the broader committee, the WACOM County Housing Advisory Committee, who then would forward it to the county executive and the council. And then once that's approved, the Health Department would create a work program, so they would take the coordinating role. Obviously, the city would have a role in that as well, I'm sure, and then work with the community partners to facilitate the implementation of the strategies that have been identified. It calls for establishing clear criteria, so this, this approach is to focus on severe weather, not a whole winter plan, but severe weather planning. So I wanted to share that with you, and this is as we look forward to next year, we've, it is still a little bit cold, I'm giving you guys daily counts, making sure the mission is doing okay, because the Fountain Community Church is no longer operating, I think you're all aware of that now. But looking forward, we just recommend that the city council, if, select somebody that would serve on this committee, and then they could, could kind of, lessons learned, maybe have a discussion about lessons learned this year, and then bring that forward into the planning for next year. So the city administration staff are very much in support of the WACOM County Health Department's proposal.
Committee, questions? Councilmember Lillicust.
Well, let me begin by saying if we're going to form this advisory committee, I'd be happy, more than happy to serve on it, but you emphasized that this committee has to do with severe weather emergency-type events, and I, I agree that this winter has shown that we weren't really prepared, didn't have things in order, and that we should, and I think we can address that. But I'm also interested in just ordinary winter shelter, and I think that's an unmet need, a separate and parallel conversation that's needed, and I think I've learned that we need to start talking about the nature of the, of the shelter need, not just in terms of numbers and math. I've heard the, the same idea expressed by our planning director, I think, Mr. Brown, you've expressed similar sentiments. So I think we have a, a separate challenge just with dealing with the nature of shelter needs in ordinary winter as well as this severe weather, and I think we need to talk at some point about both of those.
I will say, on, my division's work program is planning for winter shelter, so if we continue to have partners, or if the council wants to actually dedicate more resources, we could expand those services. I haven't checked, and I'm giving Fountain Community Church a little bit of a break before talking to them about next winter, but the Lighthouse Mission, we're fortunate to have a facility that operates year-round, and that's new to us. It's only been here for a little over two years, but we still want to plan for that winter season with the Health Department's proposing as severe weather. So that would be in addition, I guess, to what your city staff's working on.
Committee, Councilmember Knutson.
Just a reminder, the drop-in center is not under cloud anymore, is it, with the ruling of the hearing examiner? They're not closing down in two years, correct?
I'll let Rick speak to that.
Councilmembers, as you recall, there were two matters that were brought forth under appeal. One was the determination that the use for shelter in the zoning district, the drop-in center is situated, was by right and allowed use, and the other was dealing with the temporary encampment permit. Both were sustained, in essence, both were found that the city acted appropriately, and the appellants were denied the appeal. However, as council might recall, an exception was granted to the physical plant using the RCW to eliminate the need to require strictly with building code for a five-year period, and that clock is tolling. And that was at the advice of both the fire marshal and the building official that the current structure was safe. What I can say is, we can't prejudge the outcome in roughly two and a half years when that comes up again, but the physical plant is being worn down severely by the use. In essence, it was not a fully adequate facility, although it is safe, and it is not certain at this time whether that could be recommended to continue. In essence, the building might just wear out. As many of you know, there were problems with the connection for their sanitary sewer in repairing it, there were a number of issues that were further identified. Again, it makes do, and it is safe, and it provides a healthful environment, but it is not one that we can count long into the future.
Committee, other questions? Okay, I'd like to give, go ahead, okay. I'd like to give councilmembers Brown and Buchanan an opportunity to speak here.
Thank you, county councilmembers, sorry, city councilmembers.
Come on, you come up here.
Sorry, city councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. On a personal level, I just want to reiterate my personal commitment to trying to work together to come up with the right approach to the community. I was very impacted by this whole thing. That being said, the county's focus is, if you look at the, I think I will send you the data on what the county is doing, the focus is less on, on housing and more on diverting the need for people entering the streets in the first place, so it's, it's all the public health issues that we do. What's not included in that list, by the way, is, and I don't quite know how to get the data for this, but in the anecdotal conversations I've had with the county sheriff's deputies while I was serving at the shelter, there was actually a lot of people who actually end up in the jail system as a means of shelter. In fact, I was struck by one comment by an officer who'd served, I think, for seven years as a corrections deputy, said she knows a couple of people who save up their warrants during the year for the wintertime, and then they turn up, and then they present themselves for incarceration to serve out their warrants during the severe weather. So there's a lot of areas where we're actually, you know, sort of providing those services by default. I think as we get into the discussion about the mission, I've heard, you know, there's this issue about the permitting process for the drop-in center. I was fortunate to have a very, very pleasant evening with Hans, who runs the center I went at with, my wife and I took him and his wife out as a thank you on Saturday night for all the work during the, of the winter. And it was interesting listening to the conversations, because one of the, one of the things that I think that the community as a whole needs to be concerned about is if the drop-in center fails, if the mission fails, those, the population is not going to leave the city limits, they're just going to spread out into the urban areas, and we're going to notice those, you know, people hanging out at the libraries, hanging out on the street corners, hanging out near the schools, hanging out, wherever they can find shelter from, from severe winds. So it's beholden on us to, to find a solution to this, because the alternative is, is a lot less attractive for the individuals, and it's a lot less attractive for the community. I'll just. I'll just finish up at this point by saying, we've got three scenarios we have to deal with. The normal one is the normal winter. The next one is the severe winter. And then the third one is the extraordinary circumstances, such as in a natural disaster. And to put that in context, in the fires down in California that they had recently, they ended up with 50,000 people homeless. These are people who've lost everything, and are then reliant on the system for shelter for everything else. So we have to, I think we have to build a multi-pronged strategy that brings in tier one is normal, tier two, in tier one, the normal should be places like the drop-in center, the mission, and Fountain Church, and Interfaith, and so forth. And then what happens in severe, and then what happens in extraordinary.
Councilmember Buchanan.
So to follow up on, on what Mr. Brown described as the normal, and kind of the question that councilmember Lilquist asked, this year is the, the year of the update of the five-year homeless plan for the health department, which, this is kind of where this discussion was spawned, about having a subcommittee on the Housing Advisory Committee. So Housing Advisory Committee is advising the health department to work on this update. And what I've asked for is a little bit more visibility for the councils and the administrations to be able to see what's going on with that planning process during the strategic update. So I, I'm concerned, just as councilmember Lilquist is, is how are we organizing ourselves for, as Rod described, the normal situation? So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get some reports along the way, maybe even to this subcommittee, as, as the recipient of those comments and those, those plans. So we're not just caught at the end of the year with, well, here it is, either approve it, or, or it's too late, you know, how that goes, right? So I'm, I'm hoping that we get a lot more visibility on what our strategic overall plan is, as well as, you know, this, it's very important for us to be able to deal with emergent needs. We, I think we learned that this year, that we weren't, the system wasn't ready. It wasn't that any of us weren't dedicated to, you know, providing services, but the system was just overwhelmed, and we have to be able to triage that somehow, and to be able to, to comply with all the needs of our community.
Thank you, councilmember Burnham.
Yeah. Many times when these events kind of happen, everything is focused on, say, the county council, and the Bellingham City Council, about how are we going to handle these, when it's a, as you know, a total county problem, from people from, affected all over the county. Is the council coordinating as well with the small cities in terms of them, the small cities being able to house homeless populations from those areas?
Yeah, that, that is why we put small city administration on this, for those exact reasons. Because it is important that we do have a county-wide strategy that's dealing with, you know, some of those east county communities that, that really need a lot of help. So the answer is yes.
I would add to that, I think, what I don't want to have lost in this process is understanding that, as you know, the county deals with the unincorporated parts of the county for, certainly for a lot of issues. We have our own communities of homeless in the unincorporated part. My understanding is just south of Blaine, I won't identify the location, but just south of Blaine is a, an encampment that's been established for quite a while for, for veterans that don't, that, probably due to PTSD, do not want to participate in normal social activity. And so they've formed a, their own community. Of course, there's areas out in the east county where it's, it's, under any normal circumstances, those people would be homeless, but the cost of land is so low, or at least historically, it was so low. The other thing, too, is that, one of the things that I'd learned during this process is that the county and all the other cities are coordinated together in their emergency management, and the city of Bellingham runs its own program. That does put constraints on us as to what we can do in terms of resources, because we can't use resources that are, that are combined resources for the county slash small cities and apply them to the city of Bellingham. So, and one of the things I would like to throw out here is a question, there was a decision made 10 years ago, that the city of Bellingham had its own separate emergency management. I don't know the history to it, I'd like to suggest that we revisit the logic of that.
Councilmember Bargas.
One of the things we all experienced going through this process was exactly what you said, Rod, is when we were using the city building, we could only use city employees. When we were using the county building, we could only use county employees, and it really made it difficult for us to be able to collaborate on these shelters. So how we get to being able to have crossover with both of our staff, I think, is an important part of us being able to have these shelters.
Councilmember Barker.
Well, I hope if this is done appropriately, we'll probably have contracts in place, so when we get into those situations, we have people that are, can run those facilities and, and have the skills and the knowledge in order to do that. But I forwarded to Ann Deacon, we had kept some of the information that we heard from the communities, so we do have that kind of condensed. And I think that she'll be passing that on to you, but I can send it to the county council as well, just all the things that we heard from the community in the process. And one thing that I see not on here, I think, let me double-check, was representative from the tribes. I mean, we know that Lummi Nation really stepped up, and I wasn't, and I'm not sure, I'm not educated on what NUXAC did, but quite a bit of, of sheltering and process. So I think we have some lessons to learn from them, and it would be great to at least leave a seat if they'd be interested. And then the, the other piece here is, I think what you're talking about, Michael, which might be a, a further meeting, is revisiting, like, what is, what is the long-term plan? What, what are we doing at this point? Because as you had mentioned with your budget request, I don't know how many years ago, that would have, actually, we would have put money, we're doing a lot of work trying to get people out of homelessness, and trying to keep people from going into homelessness. But the reality is, is homelessness has been in this community for 100 years. And, and what we're willing to pay, because we are paying, lost commerce, increased mental health and substance abuse, decreased public health, increased public safety. I would like to have that conversation, but I don't, I don't want them to, I know that they're blurred a little bit, but I really do appreciate this, having a plan for those inclement weather times and getting that done prior to, because we could see it, like I've mentioned, in the summer with the smoke and other things. It could be far more than just cold weather. So I think with that, the only request I would have, I don't know who's going to be serving on this, but that with those transparent, that would be in the weather, but I don't think we should base it on the non-secular ability to provide shelter. I think if it's inclement weather, we should have inclement weather shelter available. So I, I'll just put my two cents in for that.
I'd like to, councilmember Lilquist? Okay. I'd like to broaden the context a little bit. This is pursuant to councilmember Brown's earlier remarks in terms of scale and what we might need to be dealing with. I'd like to invite Mike Parker from the opportunity to come down and just provide just a couple of minutes, maybe, of information regarding the scale of folks that are at risk of becoming homeless, that are currently being provided some type of subsidy or housing assistance. So if you could enlighten us here, sir.
Thank you for the invite. Greetings to all city council members, county council members, folks in the mayor's office, all the staff. My name is Mike Parker, I'm director of the Waukam Homeless Service Center at Opportunity Council. I want to start by thanking everybody in the room for all the work, care, concern, on behalf of our unsheltered homeless neighbors. A little bit about Homeless Service Center, which is probably a review for everybody, but just in case. It's funded by both the city of Bellingham and Waukam County to operate a coordinated entry system, which is why I have some data, because we actually track things in that system. And that coordinated entry system is for anybody experiencing homelessness in the entire county. Before that, and pre this process improvement, if you're experiencing homelessness, you might have to go to six or seven agencies and sign up your name on all those various lists. Partners in the, in our coordinated entry system include Bellingham Housing Authority, Catholic Community Services, Domestic Violence, Sexual Assault Services, Interfaith Coalition, Lighthouse Mission, Lydia Place, Mercy Housing, Northwest Youth Services, OC, Pioneer Human Services, SUN Community Services, and the YWCA. That doesn't include other things going on in the county, Great Expectations, New Way, so there are other providers that don't necessarily participate in coordinated entry, but are doing great work. When any of these partners are ready to accept a referral, our job, and my job, is to get them, a family, a household, as quickly as we can, that meets their eligibility requirements. So as we've seen this winter, there's a lot of complex and some unmet needs for our community's homeless neighbors. So what I did is I brought some system data, as Dan mentioned, to give a little bit of context about what we know of, what we're able to do in 2018. And then I brought some current statistics on how many people we have in the system that are waiting housing. This might give us a little bit of a, a framework to, to continue the conversation. Let me start with some of the good news. So I'll start with what we're, the, this system and all those partners that I mentioned in 2018, what that was able to accomplish. And I guess, a question you could ask yourself is, if you took all of that away, and all of the money that the city puts into that system, and all the money the county puts in, you could just imagine what our streets would look like with these folks on them. 2,281 persons either got eviction prevention to stay in their home, or to get new housing. That's a lot of people. They are part of 1,304 households. What's not included in that number is the small amount of emergency shelter. The Lighthouse does the vast majority of that. I don't have their stats, they have their own stats. But there are a variety of programs, motel vouchers, which have been a subject of a lot of conversation, SUN Community Services, which is a behavioral health shelter. 319 unduplicated folks received shelter, last year, I'm sorry, 319 households. That's 578 people. So outside of our, what we'd think about the normal sheltering options, there are shelter provided in other locations. So that's the good part of what we did in 2018. There's a lot of unmet need, and I think we heard about that. Councilmember Barker brought up, we heard a lot of feedback, specific feedback, pointed feedback, about how we can do better. We agree. So I want to give you a little sense of just how many people are waiting for housing right now. And these people may be staying in the mission, or they may have been staying at Recall's church. Right now, we have a total, now, these are households, so I'm going to switch the data on you a little bit. So I was giving you persons, this is households, so this will definitely be larger, right? But think about that 1,300 number, that's what we placed last year. There's 556 households currently that we know of in coordinated entry. That does not include everybody, because coordinated entry is voluntary, and some people do fall off that, and sometimes voluntarily so, because the wait can be so long, and we understand that. Of that, just a little breakdown to give you a sense, 330 of those tell us that they're unsheltered. Forty-seven of those households are families with children. Forty-eight of those waiting for housing are youth. Sixty-nine of those, in growing number, are elderly, and in our, for our purposes, we just chose 60 and above. Thirty-seven of those served our country as veterans. And 11 of those households are actively fleeing domestic violence. But there's a lot of work cut out for us to continue to do. We participate in that plan to end homelessness, and that plan kind of governs and drives a lot of our investments. And I can tell you, as one who firmly believes that the more we can invest in housing, the less sheltering that we'll have to do, and I hope the plan continues to put that forward. But I think, as we've seen, we've got to do, we've got to do different and better when it comes to shelters. And the last stat that I wanted to just share with you all is, there were lots of concern, you know, in the existing system, there's not a space for intact families, right? So Family Promise, as councilmember Barker brought up, can serve those intact families and does, and does so year-round, and is doing so right now. But in addition, the county, in two different instances, actually re-infused the normal dollars for motel vouchers for families with children, did so twice. Once in February, they added another 15,000, that money was all spent. I don't have the exact stats on how many, but I think there was seven to nine families were placed. This was during a lot of that inclement weather, if you remember, that was in the middle of February, so we were still having a lot of snow on the ground. Well, all of that got spent out plus, and we just heard last week, on Friday, that they added another 10, and we've already placed one, we've got about enough for five more. So hopefully, barring, barring severe weather changes, we should be able to get through with the, with the biggest motailing need for families with children. And with that, oh, and the other perspective I was going to give you is the, from the households on the hip, and I told you, there was 556 households awaiting placement, that's a lot. Our high was actually in 2017 at 700. It's hard to take a lot from data, like, did we actually do a lot better? Are people just falling off the system? We do know that we have added some resources, 22, 22 North opened in 2018, added 40 new units. So we definitely have seen addition of some units. So I would imagine that that is probably a mix of some people falling off, but we have made deeper investments since 2017. And with that, that's all I had prepared, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to hit them.
Councilmember McDooson.
I want to thank you for that data, Mike, it was nice to hear. Last week, I was at a neighborhood meeting where Homes Now was talking about their next encampment. And they've already housed three people, and that, that's good news. But our planning director, Rick Sepler, made a great statement about the future, getting ahead of the curve with our home fund. The more buildings we can get up, and as fast as we can get it up, and get ahead of that curve, and maybe when this kind of things happen, there'll be places for them to go, not just during the snow, but all year-round. And I firmly believe, in the next 10 years with $40 million, we have an opportunity to get ahead of the curve. I think this is great, and it's a good beginning, and the more we can do with our partners across the street, the better. So I think it's, I think we get ahead of it. But again, I think we're all selling ourselves a little short. Nobody predicted what we were going to get in February. I've lived here my whole life, we've never had snow like that in February. Barry, we were never outside playing in the snow in February at all. We might have been behind Russ's hamburger joint, having a glass of wine or something, but not, not any of that. But no, it's, it, it never happened. So I think now we can focus on next year, and that, or this year, so, thank.
Councilmember Lilquist.
I want to go back to the, the framework that councilmember Brown suggested, tier one, two, three, normal, I forget what words you used, but kind of like severe weather, and then the.
And extraordinary.
The truly extraordinary. I'm going to leave the truly extraordinary behind. If, this proposal's from the county? About this, from the health department? So I, I, I fully support that, we'll call that tier two. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Parker, because that's really talking about the tier one, the, the, the unmet shelter needs you had, and you said it very well, I'm going to memorize that phrase, more housing, less sheltering. And that goes to what I might call tier zero. All the things we do to prevent the need for shelter by getting people the services they need and the housing that they need, we'll call that tier zero, or I'll call it that for the moment. Because I think we need to work on all, all of those things. We'll push back on one thing, there is one department that the county runs, which has countywide jurisdiction, and that is the health department. It's specifically called out as having jurisdiction both within and outside of the incorporated area. So I think it's really appropriate that this advisory committee be advisory to the health department. It says, provide direction. I mean, do you just want to say basically whether or not we support this proposal? Because if so, I would move that we offer our support to the county's proposal.
Motion been made in second, and councilmember Bargas.
I would like to request that we add what councilmember Barker mentioned, that asking the Lummi Nation to be included. So I would approve, with that amendment, I would approve it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Barker.
Well, I, I want to thank you all. I think this, this is my fourth year, and, and having you all come here and wanting to make this a coordinated county approach, and we all know that it's a county-wide problem, and I think we're stronger together, so, and just the leadership that you've provided, thank you. I think in all the communities that we looked at that have really made a, a big dent in chronic homelessness, they've done it as a county approach. It's not just been a city within a county. So I think we're on the right path. I, I would like us to have another agenda bill for our next committee of the whole, to revisit that first stage as to what we're talking about, or what we're going to do for homelessness in general. We had the two failed opportunities for shelter. This community has said they don't want a larger mass shelter, but we certainly need to find a direction to move forward and let our community know what that is. And I think where we fell off, and Mike, you might be able to, or not fell off, where I remember the mayor was having all, all the services come in and talk about what they needed specifically to be able to help these 556 families, and then the direction went more to that larger shelter. And I wonder if we could pick up that conversation there, where the services were already together saying, here are the things where we could seriously impact in a positive way those that are unsheltered. So I, if that's something that, that staff needs to do, or I'd be happy to work on it for the agenda, is everybody okay with?
Any objections?
No.
Okay.
I just want to add the discussion of choice to the. I just want to add the discussion of choice to that. And options that are secular is come up a lot this last couple of months, and I think that's something we need to address.
Councilmember Board?
While we're doing this, do we need to appoint a person for the proposed committee?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're not forgetting something.
Councilmember Brown?
So, I just want to add a couple of things to this. One is, there's an absurdity to the way we have to deal with this. And by that, I mean, we have a state law that allows a church to operate with limited liability for shelter, but a local government cannot. I mean, it's, it's the height of stupidity. We have a situation where the state legislature's sort of patting itself on the back because they've eliminated the need for an EIS to be done for a homeless shelter. But, they haven't taken away the liability issues, right? So, one of the things I'd like to invite all of us to do is to, is to make a list of the things that are the barriers to us operating effectively and efficiently, and lobbying, working out what the right legislation should be, and then going back and saying, you need to change this. Or, you know, we'll scare the legislature by saying, oh, you need to pay for it, right? So, and then, the second thing is, when we're looking at alternatives, I'm not so much concerned, the comments I was hearing were not so much about religious orientation, but they were very legitimately like, I'm trying to get sober, and I can't be around people who are still using, for example. Or, I, I've had my documents stolen, or I'm, I'm physically afraid of being in this area. I think those are legitimate concerns. So, there's, there's a lot we can do, I think, that can move the needle relatively easily. So.
Councilmember Barker, and then I'd like to invite Councilmember Donovan to come down.
Yeah, so, thank you for that. And we were given some of the rulings as to why we couldn't use emergency operations in the emergency, which was very interesting. So, I've reached out to Joe Timmons, who's actually applied for our position, but now he's working for our region with the governor's office, which is really great, to just help explain exactly what that is, and if there are any changes that need to be made at the state level. Because it was an emergency, and it was a crisis for those, of course, if you want to take into account a non-government body that was willing to offer shelter, our responsibility is to the constituents, whether they're housed or not. And in that moment, it, it was emergent conditions, and I feel a lot of responsibility to offer some type of shelter and different types of shelter options and shelter for that. So, I'll let you all know when I hear back from that, maybe can bring more information. But, I also know Representative Shoemake and others are interested in learning, like, what is it exactly that we need, and what are the parameters? Maybe if it says it needs to be a county-wide coordinated approach, well, then you have access to some funds. So, it shows that we are all working together. So, we should probably keep that conversation going and have, again, a coordinated approach to go forward.
Councilmember Donovan?
Come on up. Yeah, just a couple of quick responses to, I think, what, what we learned in this last few weeks during the cold weather thing, and what I hope this subcommittee can do is, one thing that was really obvious is, nobody has sort of stepped up and say, we're going to be the lead entity or agency on this thing. And we've got the health, our Health Department, city emergency management, county emergency management. I think we, and I don't know for sure what, not to disagree with Mr. Brown, but like, our executives said, we can't use county emergency management, because then we're mixing money from small cities and we're not using, who aren't necessarily benefiting, I guess, from something that we have in the city, which I don't understand that argument. It's something we should look into. But, I hope, if anything, one main thing that this subcommittee can do is make a clear call about who the lead entity will be in terms of managing our response to these cold weather things. I personally think it's, it's our Health Department, but that, that's a conversation that should be had. And the second thing, this is echoing what Mr. Brown was saying, and others. Another thing I think we learned was, there is, as great as the Mission and the Opportunity Council are in doing things, there's, there are people who need not just extreme cold weather emergency shelter, but maybe even some longer-term cold weather shelter beyond just when it's 15 degrees or 20 degrees, who either don't fit the model of what the Opportunity Council's doing really well, or don't want to, for whatever reasons, go to the drop-in center. And that brings up a bigger question. I don't know if this is in tier one, two, or three, what Robert's talking about. How much do we want a committee like this, or something else, looking at what the city and the county would be willing to fund or provide as a facility above and beyond, or contract with some kind of nonprofit above and beyond what the drop-in center does in the winter for just a couple of weeks when it's cold, or for maybe a month or longer? Because I think we were seeing people, we spent a lot of time there. We were seeing people who didn't want to go to the drop-in center. And some of them said, yeah, I'll go, when they, when, you know, when this closes, I'll go back over there. And some were just, weren't going to do that. So, I, whoever ends up in this committee, I hope those are some things that we really move towards. And thanks for having us all here.
Thanks, Councilmember. Committee, further questions? Councilmember Stone?
So, I want to follow up with what Mr. Brown said, because I feel like one of the huge frustrations as a council member now is that when there is an emergency in the community, and you feel like we're doing the best we can, but there are ridiculous reasons why our hands are tied in certain, certain instances, is also that piece of communication with the public to, one, understand those maybe absurdities, but also, our job too is to get past this. And so, I feel like the rhetoric of the council saying, like, our job isn't to provide housing, like, we don't, we don't have the infrastructure in place to be the feet on the ground that are going to take people in and house them. But, when the need is there, and there's snow on the ground, and people are freezing, what is our response? And so, I understand that this committee, hopefully, going forward, will be, you know, putting some wheels in place. But, I feel like in the short term, we need a response and an answer of, we don't have control over Mother Nature. And so, if snow lands on our doorstep next week, what are we going to do? And what have we learned from the experience that we had in February? And I don't feel like I'm in a position now to answer that. And, and we obviously need those broader partnerships, and what we're saying is that there are some constraints on us as a government to be able to provide those services. And so, we need outside partners to step forward and say, we can open our doors in those instances. So, I know that the community is, is frustrated and wants us to take action, but for as much criticisms that's brought forward, we also need some help with solutions. And that's going to require some other doors to be open beyond, beyond us. So, I'm not just venting, but I, I feel like that, that needs to be said.
Committee, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. I'd like to invite county council members to stay for one item under old and new business, which directly addresses what we're just discussing. Okay. I will now entertain a motion for minutes for approval from February 25th committee meeting.
So moved.
A motion's been made in second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero. Old and new?
Go for it.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm asking this council to support, to write a letter of support jointly with the mayor for, in support of this bill. This is House Bill 1590. It's coming out of the House and going to the Senate, and the, the letter would be to the Senate committee that's going to be processing this House bill. House Bill 1590 provides, let me just read my, my script here. So, Bellingham passed a home fund via the vote of the people to generate funds to provide housing for those in need. And that bill, this bill, has the same effect, but it makes the housing funding accomplishable by a council manic vote. The staggering complexity of our housing crisis requires resources that are diverse partnerships and a degree of nimbleness to respond adequately based on local conditions. House Bill 1590 provides a degree of flexibility so that jurisdictions can deploy new local option dollars in ways that leverage other public, private, and philanthropic funds and fill gaps that constrain housing production, behavioral health treatment, and jail diversion. In our city and our county, the shortage of capital operating in behavioral health services funding is constraining the production of housing with integrated behavioral health services for people who are homeless. House Bill 1590 will help our community attract more nonprofit developers, leverage matching funding, and pay for supportive housing and behavioral health services that are currently so difficult to fund. Our city and county have created and invested considerable local resources over the last 10 years, including Waukam County's behavioral health sales tax and the city of Bellingham's housing levy. House Bill 1590 will provide the option to increase the impact of and reach of existing resources, attract new resources and partners, and make progress towards important goals, reducing homelessness, preventing incarceration, and improving the health and well-being of many of our most vulnerable residents. I was elected to provide leadership on some of our community's most pressing and complex problems. House Bill 1590 provides me and my elected colleagues the option to exercise that leadership and advance, and to advance proven solutions. So, I know that, I've been working with Representative Doleo from Thurston County, and I know that she's probably reached out to Councilmember Donovan and perhaps Buchanan seeking that support. So, I'm asking this council to jointly write a letter of support for 1590 to make that one-tenth of 1%, which, if it's county-wide, it's $4.7 million. 60% of that is required to go towards housing. The rest can go towards services. It also addresses substance use disorder and, as well as mental health illness.
Move approval of the letter.
Second.
A motion's been made in second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I just want to be perfectly clear. I, I personally have no problem contributing to the housing fund or, or above and beyond, actually, what my mandate under the various tax laws. And as those of you who know me, I spend a lot of my time, and my wife has too, in terms of helping people less fortunate in the community. I'm perfectly happy to do that. My concern about the way we've approached housing funding is, is we have three sources of revenue, sales tax, BNO, and property tax. And unfortunately, those, those revenues draw equally on those that can afford it and those that can't. And that's my challenge is to, we, we need to be, we need to be cognizant, we don't want to push people who are right on the edge of being unhoused into, into being unhoused because we increased the tax burden too much. So, that's my only note of caution to that approach.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Committee, Councilmember Bargus?
I just had an update on the ferry and our relationship with the Alaskan legislature. We had a rally on Friday in partnership with the port and our maritime unions. And we have had many of our legislators write letters of support along with us. The port is actually sending a representative to Alaska to discuss this with them, and on March 12th tomorrow, they will be having a public hearing on this. So, we have also learned that the, what may have been presented originally that this was a financial burden, might be pushed more by privatization. And because of this, it has increased the level of public support, particularly because that would mean union jobs would go away. It would affect a lot of access for people in Alaska and here as well, and affect our Alaska Marine Highway. So, these new information that we've been learning, obviously, has raised that profile because we think it should absolutely be a public entity and not a private one. So, just wanted to update everybody that there is a hearing tomorrow in Alaska.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other items for old and new? Councilmember Barker?
I just wanted to share, I, I attended the Seeds of Injustice, Roots of Change, Right Response, and Relation workshop. I know we forwarded it, and there's been a, they've, it was so well-attended that they have offered it now March 3rd, two to four. And you can get ahold of the Unitarian Fellowship Church, and it's basically-
You said March?
Oh, March. It must be April 3rd. I might be wrong then. I'm sorry. You missed out on the opportunity. It was great. It was forwarded to you all, but I think if there's an opportunity to do it again,